There we go. All right, so pursuant to Governor Baker's provisions about open meeting law, this is a Zoom meeting and the opportunity for video through Zoom or phoning in, all that information's on the town website. Just a reminder that though there is a recording, it's not to be considered an official public document. And here we are, so welcome everyone. The first agenda item is an update from the Assessors Office. This is part of a program that we have recently started, meeting department chairs, department heads, chairs of boards and commissions, so that hopefully over the period of the fiscal year, we meet with pretty much all of them. So we invited in Wendy Jones tonight as the Assistant Assessor, and this is meant to be a 10-minute or so thing, an opportunity for her to update us on anything. I think we had some questions on the Sewell parking lot, on events there. Were there other major issues that anyone wanted Wendy to touch on tonight?
We're talking about the senior work-off program too, but I think that's under control.
Okay, so Wendy, welcome. You have our ears for a few minutes and we'd love to know how things going and what's on your mind.
Great, thanks for having me. Things are pretty busy in the Assessors Office, but... So Sewell Farm, the town of Middleborough land that is in Plimpton, we've been working with them, obviously. Most people know that we're working on leasing seven and a half acres to be utilized as a trailhead parking and access to the town acquisition of 130 acres about adjacent. So they... I've been in touch with Middleborough. I think Liz has been on some of that communication as well. It's complicated, but we're moving through it. Middleborough is kind of taking on the piece of the legislature, so they have drafted a special act to go before the House and the Senate to allow the town of Middleborough to lease that portion of land to the town of Plimpton for that specific use. And they are also putting in an article in their special town meeting, October 15th, to secure funds for an on-the-ground survey. They'd like to have a little bit better bounds, especially on certain areas, to ensure that we have the access to the trails, because there's a number of dykes along that area, and also to make sure that Sewell Farm has everything that they need to keep running their area with the, I think it's the sheep area that they have in the fields that about that. So that's pretty much it that I have for Sewell Farm. If anybody has any questions.
Do we have any sense whatsoever of how long the special legislation's gonna take?
Oh boy, I don't, I don't. My understanding is that the survey would accompany that piece of legislature, and I really don't know. I don't know, I don't have that answer for you.
Okay.
I hope it's early next year, but I don't know. I mean, we'll see.
It will be good someday to have access to 130 acres.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be great when it's all complete and it'll be done.
It will indeed.
Yeah.
So let's see, any questions for Wendy? Not bad, not too onerous, huh Wendy?
I have one. How you doing finding a replacement for Dick?
We've reached out to a few people and they have declined.
It's a tough job.
It is, yeah, we're still looking for somebody. So if there's anybody out there that has an interest, we generally meet once a month, but from now until the end of the year, because we are pretty busy, we're gonna be meeting every two weeks. So, yep. But we've got a lot of solar coming, you know, there's a lot of projects, a lot of things going on. It'd be great to have some input from some growers out there that might have the time or interest to join the board. I mean, now everything's virtual, so it might be a little easier for some.
Yeah.
Yep, all right.
Anything else for Wendy? Okay, Wendy, we appreciate very much your time and efforts. Thank you, thank you.
All right, you're welcome, thanks for having me.
So next agenda item is the request for a street crossing on Ring Road. Is... Rob, are you starting the discussion on this?
I don't think I am, I believe it would be Kirsten.
Hi, I'm on right here. I can start the discussion, and then I also have my colleague Adam Schumacher that's on as well, from Nexon Energy. So Adam, maybe you just wanna introduce yourself, so they can recognize your voice.
Sure, yep, Adam Schumacher, Vice President of Nexon Energy and the entity that we are requesting the street crossing approval for is B-E-R-E-L-L-C, which is one of our project subsidiaries. And Shearston Eliason is the Development Manager on the project, who's been spearheading the permitting and various approvals for the project. So she can... Shearston's got the plans available to be shared on Zoom, and we can, you know, answer any questions that folks have. We are happy to report that we received approval for the project from the Conservation Commission at their last hearing, and we are, we've been working through the Planning Board process for... It feels like many months now. We started in the spring and then were delayed due to COVID issues, but it seems like we're at the point where we're hoping we'll be able to wrap up the Planning Board approval at the next Planning Board hearing as well.
Can you do a thumbnail sketch of what this is doing?
Sure, yep, so what we have is, the project is on both sides of Ring Road. It's this project, and I'm not sure if the select board is familiar with the project at all, but it's a, it's called a dual-use solar project, meaning that it is designed to allow for ongoing agricultural operations underneath and around the solar array. So, and this is taking part in the most recent solar program, called the SMART program, that's administered by the Department of Energy. And so these, on the west side of Ring Road, the project is sited on a cranberry bog owned by Roger Carrera, and on the east side of Ring Road, it's sited on a cranberry bog owned by the Dunhams. And the point of interconnection is on the east side of Ring Road. And so we are requesting approval for an electric line to go underneath Ring Road and connect the portion of the project on Roger Carrera's land to the portion of the project on the Dunhams' land, and then connect to the EverSource-owned line on the east side of the road.
Thank you.
So what is the impact of this project on Ring Road and on the town? Or the, not the whole project actually, but the crossing that you're proposing?
Really no impact, it's underground, boring. So we'll be going, so on the west side of Ring Road, we are installing, per guidance from the Planning Board, we're installing some screening, vegetative screening, as well as fencing with visual screening built into the fencing. And so the line will be underground from behind that screening, and then bore underneath the road, and then come up from underneath the road on the east side in the Dunhams' property, where it will run underground to the equipment pad, which is behind a thick section of trees. So it's really no visual impact of the crossing at all, and the projects themselves have been designed to prevent significant visual impact.
So you're looking essentially for the Board of Selectmen to approve the street crossing tonight?
Yes.
Any concerns, Rob, from you about the project?
No, if the boring is done properly, it's rather minimally invasive to us.
The only thing I know about it is the street, as it is laid out now, is not where the street... How do I say this?
I know, I know what you're talking about. Yeah, no, I know exactly what you're talking about. We, the boring would occur on the private property, so it would be underneath the entirety of where Ring Road is.
Okay.
Beated, not where it's physically located.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns?
Rob, it's Christine, you just mentioned some private property. Is it the Dunhams' private property, or is it another property owner?
It, so the crossing goes from the Carrera's property on the west side of the road to the Dunhams' property on the east side of the road.
So have the Carreras done whatever they need to approve them boring on their property?
So their property is a part of the project. So are you asking, you mean, are they, do they consent to this crossing?
Exactly, but I didn't realize it was part of the project.
Yep.
They own the bugs.
Yeah, right, yep.
Is there anybody who's talking against this?
There have been a couple folks who have been concerned about the visual impacts, but in our latest Planning Board hearing, we presented some revised screening proposals that were in accordance with what the Planning Board requested. And there, at this point, the Planning Board feels that we've done a sufficient job with the screening we've proposed.
So have they voted yet?
No, they have not. They were hoping that they'll vote at the next hearing.
Which is Wednesday, I believe, correct?
Well, if there is one on, I thought the next one was on the 21st. Or if there is one on Wednesday, yeah, I think we're, the next time we're presenting is on the 21st.
Gotcha, okay. And you said you're running underground for a good portion of this, that initial run?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, the entirety of the lines on the western side of the road are underground. And so they go from being underground on the west side, they're, it's an underground boring underneath the road, and then it continues underground on the Dunham's property until the point where it reaches the equipment pads. And from the equipment pads, it goes to overhead line to where it connects to the EverSource line. But the portion on the Dunham's property that is overhead is behind a thick section of trees, so it's not visible from the road.
So really, most of the wires that are closest to any of the butters, that's all gonna be underground, is that correct?
That's right.
Wow, that's great.
Yeah.
All right.
I mean, right now, it's just a big open area, so it's not like it's going to be negative anyway that I can see. The only issue I have is, I don't see any reason not to approve it, but I hate to get ahead of the Planning Board approving it, unless that's something they need from us.
I don't, they haven't, well, they have asked about it. You know, what do you need to do to be able to bore underneath the road? So I, so we told them, you know, that we had been in touch with the Highway Department to request this. So I, one thought that I have, I would just respectfully propose that if the Board feels it is in a position to approve it, that it could be approved contingent upon final approval from the Planning Board. And that would allow us to tell the Planning Board that the crossing has been approved contingent upon their approval.
Sounds good to me, I don't know how Mike and Christine feel.
I'm fine with that. You have any concern with that, Christine?
No, that sounds like an excellent compromise.
Good.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the crossing on Ring Road contingent on Planning Board approval. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call, go, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Ms. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Russo, aye. Okay, well done.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, onward, Council on Aging Appointment, Jacqueline Freitas.
So Jackie offered to get on the Board. She's been working with us, so I'm in favor of that, and I hope we'll approve it.
Okay, any discussion?
Well, Jackie's been a long time volunteer with the Council on Aging, so I think that she would be an excellent choice for a member of the Board.
So do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Jacqueline Freitas to the Council on Aging Board.
I'll second the motion.
Cool, all right, roll, any further discussion? Roll call, vote, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Ms. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Russo, aye. Okay, well done, and we're really appreciative Jackie would volunteer, and glad to have a Freitas in town government again. Okay, next item is Council on Aging update, and the naming of John Trainer as Acting Director of Council on Aging. So do you want to start in with the update, John?
Sure. So the thing we've been doing is trying to get the Board actively involved in terms of setting out some of the operational ways we want to go forward. I think when Joy Maba was there, she really took on the whole operation herself, and in a sense, didn't share any of the responsibilities. So we're trying to sort that out a little bit. I think you've probably seen that we've done a Council on Aging newsletter. We've been folding newsletters all day, so that'll go out in the next day or two. Nancy Butler has been, she's the chair, and she's been stepping up and very active and very positive, and I think, you know, we need to find a director. My own hope is that we can find somebody in town. It's, there's a lot of work to it as we get into it, and we only pay, Liz, you can help me with that, but I think it's like $8,000, $7,000 or $8,000, so it's like 10 hours a week. And that's why I'm thinking somebody in town that is willing to understand that it's probably a 20-hour week or even more, but they're only gonna get paid for 10. But it was volunteer, you know, when you go back when Chris Moreno was there, and Chris was the one who got a stipend at town meeting for $5,000, and it's just sort of slowly grown. The key is to get a person who's very people-oriented and very interested, and I think we'll have a great Council on Aging. I can answer any specific, if you've got any questions. We do have Jean, who is under a grant, back as a receptionist. Jim is also, he's very interested in continuing to be the Senior Aid for Transportation. He's also can now drive the van, the wheelchair-accessible van, so that's a big plus. Joyce Curran, who was our outreach worker, has had to, she had resigned actually before Joy did because of family health problems. She's, there's some things going on there in her family. So we need an outreach worker, and we need one more person potentially on the Board. The newsletter, I think you've seen the draft that's going out, lists all the people who are on the Board, but one person has some health problems, so we're not sure how that's gonna work out yet, but we'll see. Liz, anything you wanna add to it?
No, I thought that that last meeting that you convened virtually was very productive, and it's nice to have Jean Pacheco back in the office on a daily basis, kind of holding everything together there on that front. And I think it's a great group of people that have all banded together to get us to the next step, so hopefully we get some qualified applicants and we can move forward with that.
Yeah, just one or two other things. I did go to a Board of Health meeting after our last Selectment's meeting to see if we could meet physically, but the Board of Health, they haven't put anything in writing, but they certainly weren't receptive, which was kind of interesting, given that they were meeting there. We've met with the Kingston Director of Elder Affairs, Paula Rossi-Clapp, who actually lives in Plimpton, and I think she's gonna be a very good source of information around things like government reporting, et cetera, what programs are available, because obviously, they're a much bigger town, they have more staff, and I think they're more on top of what's going on. And I also reached out to Woodlands Director, Janine Eaton, just to let her know that there was a change. And Liz talked to Susan Lawldes, who is the Halifax Director for the Council on Aging, and I've just chatted with her for a minute. So I think we're trying to make the right connections and get this set up, so when we do bring on a new director, they won't have to reinvent the wheel.
And John, as I understand it, we're feeling like naming you Acting Director of Council on Aging makes some sense?
Just because there needs to be somebody from an operational focus, and Liz got a tremendous on her plate, and I'm willing to do it until we can find somebody.
And we are really appreciative that you are, and it's a big job and a sudden opening, and so thank you so much.
Sure.
I'm totally in favor of the title. Can I get a new title too?
You can. Wanna be an Assistant Director?
No, I'm good.
Do you know how to fold newsletters?
I do, actually.
Okay, good, you're hired.
It's always the boss that ends up doing the folding. It's amazing how that happens.
Well, and the spouse.
Do you think we need to vote on that, Liz, or just that we're general agreement?
It might be cleaner just to take a quick vote. I just think that's best.
All right, I'll make a motion.
Mark, can I ask a super tacky question first?
Oh, we love tacky questions.
Perfect, okay. Yeah, this was just about the salary. So is John gonna be paid the stipends while he's the Acting Director? Or how's that gonna work?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Well, I might ask my Selectman's salary to be doubled.
Two bucks, John, really?
You know, I wanna step out.
Technically, this is a different position. The position that we will be advertising is for Director of Elder Services. John is being appointed Acting Director of Council on Aging.
Okay.
So I make a motion that John be appointed Active Director of Council on Aging. Do I hear a second?
I'll second, yes. And John, thank you so much for taking the lead with us. There's just such important work to be done, so thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And roll call, vote, Mr. Trainer, I don't know if you wanna vote.
Aye.
Ms. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Russo, aye.
I wanted to make sure it was, you know, two to one, not two to one.
Okay. So the next item is the Board's Projects and Priorities list. I don't know, John Williamson, I'll offer to move up and do next the school district information first, so if you don't wanna sit through all the rest, you won't have to, totally up to you.
You can just go with the order you have, it's fine.
Okay. So our Projects and Priority list is sort of an outgrowth of what used to be called the parking lot. Our opportunity every couple of months in the busyness of all the work of helping the town run not to let things fall through the cracks, so hopefully we'll just kind of zoom through this and see if there's anything that we can cross off the list and the degree to which maybe there's something, other things we want to add to the list. So several of the first items and bullet points have to do with the Town Properties Committee.
Before the goals, didn't we change or add one?
That was the one that I had included in the email. That was the one that was initially a goal about COVID-19, and we had said that was too specific. And I had suggested draft language, something to the effect of, "Support the town's emergency management agency in response to health or public safety emergencies," or something like that.
Okay, I just think we ought to get that down on paper then.
Okay, are you good with that?
Yeah, I am.
Yeah, fine.
Love it, sounds good.
Okay, so the next many items are Town Properties Committee. Not quite sure how we want to proceed through this.
I would let John proceed, he's the chair.
So, I mean, I'm happy to sort of just walk through the various items here, and you can go from there. We are currently working with Beta Group on the master plan for the town campus. We, so I mean, we're making some progress there. I think some of the things that we're bumping up against aren't that surprising. You know, we have a fire station in the middle of the campus. You know, it's not as big as it needs to be, because even though we got that other parcel of land, part of it is sliding down the Grand Canyon. At least, that's the Grand Canyon part of Plimpton, between the townhouse and the town barn. So, you know, so space is a bit of an issue, and so we sent, we asked the- So, you know, so space is a bit of an issue. And so we sent, we asked consultants to go back and sort of validate in some other points, but I think we've, we've come a long way in, in some of the sort of mockups that they have. And, you know, my hope is, is that, you know, we'll be able to, to get something pretty firm to share more broadly, you know, in the near future. They are, they are, I'm, I think they're quite good to work with and they're kind of with some neat ideas. So I don't know, John or Mark, if you have anything to add to that.
No, I think it's been a great step forward that we're, you know, I'm sure we won't always agree, but at least now we've got something down in paper and we can work from a plan.
And I also think the timing is, is good because I think coming out of this plan will be the need for some additional planning and we will need to know that well ahead of the time when we start planning for town meeting and, and trying to understand what other steps we need to make in order to either validate some of the ideas that come out or to, to put some of them sort of to, you know, to put some of them to rest, right? So I think that's really important. Respect to technology, I mean, I think we have some projects going on. The committee itself hasn't really dug into this too much, but I do know we have the fiber optic upgrades that the Chief Planche is sort of helping the town work through. But I'm sure we will have more as we, as we dig into some of the other planning for all the various town properties that this will be an area we will need to take, spend some time on. The Highway Barn, we are, we are working through that. We have engaged some architects to help us, architectural firm helped us put together the specs to make sure that we get exactly what we need for this, for this new roof. And I believe the last piece we were doing there was to get some input from a structural engineer in order to make sure that any damage done by the leaking roof doesn't need to be remedied so that that can be part of the specs if it needs to be, or can be addressed that it doesn't need to be done because we've had the work done. So we're really trying to create a very clean bid package to try and limit the variability of the bids that we get back, right? I mean, the more specific we are in our bid packages, the more, the easier it is for a contractor to bid that out. The Fire Department, we're going to talk some about that at our next meeting. We have a number of issues with that building as it exists now. I think the biggest issues that we're going to be facing in the short term is the space constraints in that the vehicles that will be replacing other vehicles, namely the new ambulance and the eventual brush truck will be a little bit bigger because everything gets bigger, not smaller with vehicles lately, will be a little bit bigger than the ones that are there. And if you've had the opportunity to look at the six vehicles that we have in the garage now, they are literally parked up against the back wall of the building and there isn't too much space between them. Believe that the, when, that in one of the bays, there would be no space between the two vehicles when we get to next spring, summer. So that's going to be something that we have to figure out even on the short term, what to do, because none of these vehicles are capable of being left outside, especially in the winter due to the, either the medicines that they carry or the water that they're carrying in them. So that's just, that's just a physical challenge that we're going to have to address. Plus, as I mentioned, you know, the Fire Department does sit in, sort of in the middle of the, of the area. And we have done, the chief has done some good work of poking around to understand, you know, what tweaks we could make to the building. And each one that we think might be, you know, low cost, short-term thing to do, ends up coming back. It's not so low cost. So we'll have to dig into this a little bit more and come up with some recommendations for the short and medium term of what we need to do as we, as we come up with a broader plan of, for the whole area. For the library, the, the lighting issues, so that we have an issue with the two lights that are in the old part of the, the two big lights that hang from the ceiling that are in the old part of the, old part of the building. I did actually talk to, to Deb the other, other day. One of the things, Liz, that we may want to do here is to perhaps again, turn to the architectural firm and see if they have anyone on staff who might be able to recommend either, or come up with some idea of doing a, having a lighting plan done for that room because it never, it's never been good. But the existing lights that we have, and I think I talked about this at one of the other meetings, they have two sets of lights in each light. And one of them have this really weird bulb in it that did the uplighting for the room, which I believe what has happened is that whatever bulb was there, and it's a non-standard bulb, ended up being replaced over time with more energy efficient bulbs, which actually were not designed to go and be mounted on a horizontal basis. Because when you look the bulb numbers up of what I took out of there, they're meant to be mounted vertically. And so the bulbs fail after a certain period of time because they're not cooling properly and they literally blow apart. And I have an LED one and a CFL one sitting up here in the house. So I think those lights are done, but it would probably behoove us, and Deb said that she may have some gift money that we could also tap. So it may behoove us to get, again, talking about planning, that's what this is all about, right? Come up with a proper plan that either can be implemented at once or that we can implement over time to create good lighting for that space, particularly when we can have people back in the building using it. So.
I can find that out from the architect and see if they might recommend anything.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's just, it's like, you can go start flipping through books and saying, well, that light looks good, but that might not be what we really need there or what would be best for the space. Roof issues, and I still owe Liz you that. So before I am allowed to go back up to the house tonight, I'm going to get that information and dig it out, but we, we want to hire a roof consultant to look at all of the roofs on the town campus and I think also the, the old townhouse and make sure that we have a proper, good understanding of sort of life expectancy and what needs to be done and for all of the buildings, so we can get that in as part of the plan. And clearly we know that the townhouse has repeated issues that we're going to deal with. The, and then the, I think the other thing on that was a reference to the water issues. The Fire Department is going to be putting in a system to deal with, you know, treating the Plimpton water, which we're all familiar with, because it's making a mess of their new bathrooms they put in. And we may be able to take whatever they do there and look to port that to the library at some point as well as part of our planning, because they've never had any treatment to the water there. The town green flagpole, that's, that's on our radar. I think it's on Liz's list to sort of poke around and see if we can get some idea of what it would cost for us to have that, you know, cleaned up, repainted and new rigging put on it. And that would be something we would look to town meeting in May to get the funding for and execute on that. I will note that in the, in this storm last week, the flag that was hanging up there has now come down, which means we probably can't put a flag back up because the rigging isn't, isn't, it was hanging on by, by a limited amount. So I think it's done. So that's definitely an end of life and it's current iteration. The townhouse, I already mentioned the, the roof. And we are working on the, what we call the lift project, although we may have some other suggestions for that from architectural firm. So, you know, that's moving along. We do have the funding from the state and we just have to work through some of the, some of the design of what we want to do and make sure that we're meeting the appropriate costs. And as I saw your email from earlier today, make sure that we're not running afoul of any guidelines. But, you know, we hope to move, move that forward and deal with providing handicap access to the upper floor of the old townhouse, of the old part of the townhouse and perhaps even improving along the side there and even the entrance, the existing main entrance. So we'll see what we can, we can get out of that. With respect to water and drainage, that's, that's something we're going to have to deal with, particularly since we have the water issues in the, in the lower level of the old part of the townhouse. We will need to look to get, get a plan together about what we'll need to do there. My guess is it's going to have something to do with drainage and, and waterproofing in an effort to keep the water out to begin with. But that is, that is on the list to do and one of the many things that we have to get some help in doing the planning. And I guess townhouse septic is a fresh issue. So that is actually something that we're doing a little bit of work with the consultants on to take sort of, take a look at where everything is and understand it a little bit better. And it's probably going to be one of those issues at some point that we'll need to, that we will need to address more than just dealing with what problems come up and periodic snaking. But those issues clearly are more than just septic outside of the building. There's some building issues with respect to where pipes are going and so on. But before we get to that, we kind of need to figure out what the plan is and what we want to do for the campus overall, because that may alter the direction or, or plans for what we need to do to the existing septic or not. So there's, there's a lot of pieces that are sort of out there that need to come together for that. I think that's, I think that's the end of my list, right?
Great.
For now.
Thank you, John. So any comments? So emergency management, Liz, do you want to take the lead on these bullets?
Sure. So our Hazard Mitigation Planning Grant is in progress. That's the one that we have Woods Hole Group working on, on our behalf. They're our consultant. And we're going to be circling back with them for another project team meeting, probably later this month. I believe late October is their timeframe. The current stage that we're at within that grant, we're taking a look at all of the town's critical facilities that Old Colony Planning Council had identified in the prior iteration of the plan, which I believe was dated 2015. So we're just looking at some of those facilities and seeing if anything new needs to be added to the list. Also, there were some duplicate items that we believe could be removed. In particular, some of the locations of dams within the town. It seemed like there was some duplicate entries. So we're working to get that clear. And then several of us had kind of little side assignments of information we had to get back to the consultant prior to our next meeting and all of us have been working on that.
Are we up to date, Liz? Do I owe you anything on that?
No, no, I think we're fine, but I might circle back with you prior to our next meeting because you had some good suggestions of a few other critical facilities that we might want to add to our list.
Okay, thanks.
I just want to make sure I recorded those properly.
Yep.
And then otherwise for COVID-19 response, that's still very much a work in progress. We've been ordering supplies as needed. It seems like some of the supply chains are starting to open up a bit more. Also in regard to COVID-19 response, we were fortunate enough to receive a $4,000 grant through Old Colony Elder Services for our Council on Aging and better preparing them for a potential second wave of the virus. So we've made several purchases to spend down that grant. We had to spend a bulk of it by the end of September. So we were able to purchase a freezer for them. We should be getting delivery of that sometime within the next week. That will greatly help with our food pantry efforts for the Council on Aging. We were also able to purchase an air purifier, filters, hand sanitizer, disinfectant wipes, all of that stuff to better prepare the Council on Aging and really to better prepare our facility, especially now where the COA is becoming more active again. And we have dedicated use of that town kitchen area. It's important that we're able to keep these areas clean and disinfected. So that's been moving along. And Chief Silva's been doing a fantastic job continuing to process reimbursements through the Cares Program through the county. We just passed one of our soft deadlines last week, but there has been a time extension. So we're taking a second look at some of the paperwork and expect to be making another submittal, probably sometime towards the middle of next week. And then we need to go through everything and set up a meeting with Barbara Gomez just to kind of reconcile all the records and make sure that everything adds up and that any funds that were reimbursed for make it back to the appropriate accounts.
Liz, is the freezer an upright freezer?
It is. It's a, it's a freezer fridge combination.
Great, great.
Larger on the freezer side. It's some commercial grade, like restaurant grade.
Thanks.
Great. Anything else on emergency management?
Not at this time.
Okay. So Highway Department, could you start in on this, Liz? I'll chime in on the last couple.
Sure. So we already discussed a, a bit about the Highway Barn roof and insulation. I was going to mention it in my update later on, but I can mention it now. As John mentioned, the structural engineer who's working with our architect was, he was actually out on site this past Friday. He met with Rob Furlot and physically inspected the building and everything. So he should have his findings, I would imagine, within the next few days. And hopefully that's all that's needed and they can finalize the specs and we can work on getting the bid package fully put together and eventually out on the street. Implementation of pavement management plan, that's something I've been in touch with Rob a little bit about. We do have our pavement management plan and for the roadways that were paved this year, they happen to align perfectly with what the plan indicated needed to be done. So he is in compliance with the plan and he is in contact with the consultant should he have any questions. Main Street Ring Road intersection. We had also added that the Prospect one to that, correct? And the Winnetuxit, where you did the speed zones. I think that this initial list, I changed the date on it this evening, but the original projects and priorities was from July 13th. So
Correct.
A lot more has happened and I'll, on here.
One thing I, we said we were going to put a committee together on Main Street Ring Road. And, you know, I, I'm, I don't want to be on that committee for a couple of reasons. One is Council on Aging has just taken a lot more time than I thought it would. But the second is I think there's people feel I have a bias about driving an agenda and I don't, but. So I don't know, Christine, you expressed an interest last time. Maybe, or whether we just let it go to spring, given we're going into the winter months.
If I might, just before you talk about implementing a committee, Rob has been in contact with a transportation engineer and he's working on getting them to put together a quote for him. We might be able to pay for some of it out of Chapter 90 money, but put together a quote where they could actually look at the sightlines and help us establish the speed zone. You voted to implement the speed zone, but we don't want to just arbitrarily do it. We want it to be an appropriate measured distance and have it make sense. So he is in talks with somebody right now. They're supposed to be putting together a quote. They would also look at any road markings that should be painted on and that kind of thing. So before you establish a committee, you might want to give Rob a chance to assemble that information and maybe he could come back to one of our upcoming meetings and kind of present that to you and we could see if it's something that we want to pay for and move forward on. But I think that would give you a much more clear path forward.
I think that's probably good, Liz. I'm not against that. I just don't want it to be the endpoint because I still think the island still has to be addressed as to whether we do anything with it.
John, I appreciate your comments on that, but I, and I, I agree. I think Liz and I met with Rob. There's a lot of creative stuff that are being done on, on markings on the road that might be helpful. Probably this next step, the committee is going to require some money to hire some professional. professional help anyway. So giving it a little time, seeing what happens with the speed zone, probably very much keeping it on our radar, possibly asking for some funding in the spring. So letting it sit for a while makes a lot of sense. Not letting it die on the vine by any means, but just letting it play out a little, I think, makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. That makes sense to me.
All right. So I think we're down to develop clear procedure for chipping, removing of trees. I think we made progress on that, Liz, didn't we, but not get it written down yet?
We did. We don't have anything in writing yet. I think we had kind of filled Rob's plate with some of these other items, but we can certainly have him put something formally in writing for us. Essentially, the highway department, as a general rule of thumb, stays off of private property. They've been handling things on a case-by-case basis. Say if a large windstorm comes through and a bunch of people have downed trees. Some people in the past, I guess, have left it by the side of the road, and if they're able to, they've picked it up. You know, but the town is growing. It's becoming, you know, and as these other events happen more frequently, I think the need for a solid procedure is definitely there. So it's something that we can put on Rob's radar, but I think we need him to finish pursuing some of the other items first.
I do agree. This comes up at every Council on Aging meeting, mainly because the seniors, you know, they're not equipped to do a lot of this. So any clarity once it's in writing would be great.
Okay. I'll let Rob know that, that we just don't want him to forget about it, but as long as he can finish some of the other stuff first, then to look at that. Maybe he can get a draft to us for our next meeting.
So the next item is Main Street speed limits, which we've talked about. That's along with the Parsonage-Winnatuxit intersection, and Rob's working on particularly the line markings. Hopefully, we can get something done soon. Apparently, a little later in the season, painting the road becomes much harder when the temperatures go down. The one bullet point I'd like to add here is heavy truck restriction on back roads. Liz and I spoke with Rob about this. It's certainly possible for us to do this. I think we are trying to be careful of not overwhelm Rob, but that one also is in his ballpark a little. This may be a fantasy, but I wonder if we couldn't get to the place where heavy trucks were pretty much limited to the major numbered routes, 106, 58, and 44. And I think that would be a goal we'd move toward, just a matter of having enough time to get to it. So still working on that one.
When I was looking at this for something else, the one thing that comes through is you can't ban the trucks unless you provide an alternate route. So like Prospect Road, trucks coming from Middleborough.
Yeah. That one, it's a problem on some roads, but on lots of roads, it's not.
That's right.
Like from 106, turning onto Main Street would be a no-no. They can go up a couple miles and turn onto 58. It won't work everywhere, it needs some creativity, but in other places, it'd be very straightforward, you know? Unless, if it's a through truck from 106, they're not going to turn down Main Street.
I'm not sure whether you can do it, but let's look into it.
The information we got from town council looked like it was certainly possible. I mean, we'd have to work in concert with Department of Transportation. It'll take some work, but it's excited to pursue that one.
Yeah, great.
And Mark?
Yes.
One other thought that may be worthwhile pursuing this is, you know, some communities ban the use of engine brakes.
Ah, yeah.
Yeah.
I believe you and I were on the green at one point, and truck after truck after truck went by, and you were commenting on it. And I don't know what's going on lately with the using them a lot more, it seems, or at least the trucks going by are. And they do it a lot, sort of as they come to the curve by the townhouse.
What do they call that, jacking, John?
Well, I think technical term is engine braking, but they also call it a jake brake.
Jake brake, that's it. I see a lot of signs in towns that say, "Do not use your jake brake."
Right. And, you know, they use it because it puts less wear on their regular brakes, and I understand that, but maybe if they weren't going as fast as they were into the curve, they would, you know? But just to me, it fits that same category as where you're looking to allow the trucks, that it may be worth getting some answers on that, too.
Agreed. Okay, onward to financial. Looks like maybe, Liz, you'd introduce some of these?
Sure.
I lost the sound.
Oh, can you hear me now?
I can hear you. I couldn't hear Mark.
I couldn't hear Mark well either. It sounded muffled.
Okay. Anyways, go ahead, Liz.
So financial team, we're going to be picking up those meetings again. A lot of these all kind of align with one another. I believe our goal is for a November 16th meeting and to get John Willenson involved. It's a regularly scheduled night for BOS and get finance committee involved, get Barbara on the line, and just talk through next year's budgeting process and really what some of our priorities are. The Town Properties Committee has been doing a lot of really great work, and some of it is going to require a certain level of commitment in terms of funding. Also, potentially restructuring some of our debt as we move into the future and certain things are paid for. In addition to that, I have some items more from a personnel standpoint and some things that I think might need to happen in looking at next year's budget, just to make for some seamless transitions later on down the line. So I think having a meeting like that in mid-November, just to kind of set the tone and lay out where each group is coming from, I think would be really beneficial. So that kind of ties in with all of that. Five-year capital plan, finance committee was taking a look at that, and we're in the process of updating that. Things got sort of derailed with COVID. They were very actively meeting, and we had gone through the old plan, took off everything that had already been accomplished, and had started on the new plan. And then a lot of that, as I said, kind of was derailed with COVID, but they'll be picking that back up again. And I think it ties in somewhat directly with what the Town Properties Committee is doing in a lot of ways. So again, I think that meeting in November will be really beneficial for everybody. The financial reporting strategy, as well as surveying software options, those two in my mind really go hand in hand because depending on the software package that you have, it can better position you to have a strategy for financial reporting in an actual format or template for financial reporting that makes sense for people and that's easy to read. Where it's on this list, I'm wondering if it might make sense for myself or myself and one of you to talk with Barbara a little bit. I think she'll need some clear direction as to where the board wants to go with this. In my mind, next steps would be for her to survey some of these software companies and figure out what these packages entail, how much do they cost, can they be tailored for a town our size, even producing potentially some sample templates for people to look at and that sort of thing. But those are just my ideas.
You know, I'm strongly in favor of this, and my background's financial. I'm the liaison to the finance area, so I sure would like to be a part of this. I think when we go back and take a look at a little history, this was already on the accountant's plate, and it's time we pushed it forward. I'm going to stop there. Mark, if you're talking, I can't hear you.
I wasn't talking.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah. All right. Anything else on financial? I also agree, we do need to push it forward, and it would be good to get that moving.
All right. Fire department, street numbers.
Yeah, I was pushing this last time, you know, putting the little green signs out, and I think there was some pushback. Somebody, did we not want to do that? I can't remember, quite frankly.
Not sure.
Because I talked to the fire chief at one point, and he said, "Sure." But, you know, if it doesn't make sense, it doesn't make sense. I just, as you know, I've been trying to get these green street number signs all over town, so.
So maybe we can give that to Liz to ask the fire chief, ask recent issues, to see about putting up those numbers.
Yeah.
I can work on that.
Thank you.
Plimpton Hurst.
It'd be a Facebook blast.
Yeah, we've done that a couple of times. You know, and actually, there's quite a few around town now. The Plimpton Hurst, John.
It'd be kind of fun to get, sorry.
I'm sorry. No, go ahead, Christine. I'm stepping on you.
No, I was going to say, it'd be kind of fun to get maybe some public officials that have them in their yard, a picture with your sign, and, you know, put it on our Facebook page, just to encourage other people to do it.
Be glad to do it. I got my sign, I love it.
I've got mine, too.
By your sign? Okay.
The Hurst, the reason, John, I was, you mentioned the roof on the old, you know, highway building on Center Street. Do we need to worry about that this winter?
I wasn't even talking about that building, but that's another one that, you know, as long as it's standing, we probably need to look at, although that's probably pretty straightforward. Yeah, I have no idea what condition that's in. My understanding is, is it's probably not in the best condition.
I'd hate to see the Hurst get, you know, deteriorate because of that, because I think at some point, that's going to be a nice thing to be able to put out on old home days or whatever we have, Memorial Days or other things.
Yeah, I haven't actually, I don't think I've actually seen it, so I probably need to see it. I think we need to add it to the Town Properties list.
Okay.
Because it's, you know, we have to find someplace to put it, and we really don't have a place. No, in the short, well, in the medium term, right? I mean, it's not an ideal location in a damp, cold building.
Yeah. It's a part of our history.
Yeah. I mean, you know, part of me has wondered a little bit about whether it would, and it may be a crazy idea, but even for a period of time, whether it would fit in the bigger room downstairs in the old townhouse.
I don't know.
You know?
I don't know if you could get it in there.
Yeah, I mean, whether it would fit in through that door, taken partially apart or not. But, you know, it's, you know, when we were talking about a storage building, right, then it made a lot of sense for it to go there. But since that sort of backburnered, you know, we really don't have a place for it. So as we think through some of these other things, we'll have to figure that out because it does need to be in a climate controlled or more climate controlled.
I wonder if there's some private citizen out there with a barn that's empty, and, you know, maybe we could, I don't know, Cranberry Grower or something, might be able to just put it through the, get it through the winter months.
Yeah, but I mean, but I think that's the point. I think medium term, it needs to be climate controlled. It's the same sort of issue we have with the fire trucks. If you let it sit even in a dry barn, it's going to get the humidity, it's going to dry out, it's going to get humid, and the wood is going to crack, you know? That's the whole issue that you have with it. So we'll put it on that list. We'll start trying to figure out that one, too.
Okay, natural and recreational resources. Liz, you want to do MVP?
Sure. We were successful with our grant application, $49,000. So I believe Linda Letty is working with Bill Napolitano from SERPAD, Lori Muncie from Old Colony Planning Council, and we're going to work at getting a meeting together with those folks and get started. But all of the paperwork has been signed and turned in, so we're good to go on that. The town on land disposition process continues to be in progress. Mark, I don't know, do you have anything to say about the Water Resources Group?
It's been kind of quiet since Open Space meets Thursday night, and we'll get an update on that. I think we got really slowed down by COVID on that, but I'll find that out. I'll know more next time.
So Homestead, Wendy already talked about solar agreements. Board of assessors established a new format for some of those agreements, and they're going to work on some negotiations now. It should be coming forward to us with some of that in the very near future. Ballfields and Harry Jason Park options, I'm not sure who wants to...
I would just note that as part of the discussions we've been having with the consultants for the town campus, the questions that we sent them away with was, could you give us a back-up envelope as what it would cost to build a ballfield nowadays? Because that, I think, is going to be an open item as we look at what to do with the campus and whether the ballfields stay or whether they go. And it's just something we have to factor in as one of those costs if we assume that we have to replace the ballfields, right? Or a ball.
I think I would move that up under the Town Properties.
I can move that.
Yep. We know we have space at Harry Jason, but, you know, it also depends on cost and what we can fit in the space and so forth. So there's, we should have a better idea in the next month or two.
Senior citizen, John already gave us the COA update. Technology, the fiber optic upgrade, including the phone system. Matt Clancy is well on his way with that. That's all a work in progress. And it looks like we may even get a larger portion of it potentially paid for through another grant that's being pursued. So more to come on that. Technology master plan is something that we had started working on, kind of went off the radar a little bit with everything going on with COVID and the schools being incredibly busy, trying to get themselves back online, CARES reimbursement. So that's something, honestly, I'll probably give that a little time, or I would be inclined to, before I bother Steve Pello again. I think his plate is very full at the moment, but it is something that's on everyone's radar, and it's also on there under the Town Properties Committee. We do need a roadmap going forward, but I think for the most part right now, until we get the fiber optic upgrade done and some of that other stuff, it's unclear how much of a plan we'd really be able to build.
And I think that's wise, Liz. In a discussion with Steve I had last week, he indicated that in the same period last year, as of like the 23rd of September, his whole support team had done 500 tickets, which are, you know, requests for help with the technology. They were already at 1,600 in the same amount of time. And school had opened two weeks later.
Yeah, so I just, I shouldn't bother him right now.
They're a little busy, and of course, the amount of technology that they're sort of responsible for right now is exponentially greater, since we have machines with pretty much, or technology issues for every student, potentially, and all of the teachers as well, not just the high school, right? So.
And then the remote capabilities, that's in progress right now. We're working on it. We have some labs. We're trying to get everything up and running and programmed. We have a new router that's going to be put into place, so we're working on that, and the goal is that if there goes a second we're working on that, and the goal is that if there's a second wave of things this later in the fall or the winter, that we're all adequately prepared and people are able to work remotely and make that transition very seamlessly. The volunteer recognition and outreach, I have a list for my update in a few minutes of some open positions. I did put the stuff on Facebook, we didn't get a ton of response. We can try again, maybe, and get the word out.
Well, we did get two for the school committee.
We did.
And I've reached out to both individuals, so when I hear back from them, we'll work to get, a quick meeting together with a few folks and be able to come back to the board.
Great.
Each qualified housing, we're working through that right now with the consultant in the Town Properties Committee. The flags from Center to Old Town House, that might be a good, maybe a good winter project so that we could implement it for the spring.
Yeah, I'm still in favor of doing that. I do wonder, though, if there's some grants or whether we could get any businesses, though I'm kind of reluctant to talk to businesses, given COVID.
Right. Flag and decoration policy, I think we were gonna wait until, Christine, am I correct, we wanted to wait until prior to New Year for Memorial Day?
Yeah, we can wait on that one.
So that can stay there. John was cooking right along with the internships. We had somebody good, then unfortunately, COVID happened and it severely limited the ability to have other people in the building and everything. Maybe that's something, though, over the next little bit that we can explore.
I did have somebody reach out, Liz, but I think COVID is gonna shut this down, and the more I thought about it, I, if we have to do it remotely, it becomes a real drain on you, I think.
It does have that potential, and to be honest, as much as we would love the services of an intern, we, we're trying not to have extra people in the building.
Yeah, I agree.
So I think we should keep that on the list, but hold off for now.
Yeah.
Cemetery cleanup events.
I, you know, I was looking at the North Plimpton Cemetery, but I've written twice to Dr. Grossclose, who is the owner of the land, and have not had a reply, so I'll just keep at it.
And then the cemetery signage as well, we were gonna look at that.
Yeah, that's gonna be sometime when we can get out there and find out where those actually are. They're on private land, so have to be a little careful.
And I, I haven't forgotten, I was tasked somewhere along the way with checking out CPA money potentially for cemetery cleanups, and that's on my list, and we'll get that at some point. I'd like to add a bullet here, this is under volunteerism and general government, and I think that bullet would be educational opportunities, particularly for volunteers and people in government. We did the open meeting law seminar a week or so ago, and I hope that's a project we can continue. I would love to find someone with talents on teaching about de-escalation so that everyone in town government and all of us could, could pick up some skills there. A quick side story, we had the open meeting law seminar, I think a week ago Monday. It was mentioned at the meeting that during Zoom calls, all votes should be done by roll call. Within an hour, I was sitting in on another meeting and one of the people said, hey, I just heard we're supposed to do roll calls, so that thing paid dividends right away, and I'm glad.
So the long-term list, Carver Urban Renewal Project, I reached out to Rick LaFawn, the Carver Town Administrator, earlier today. He said that VHB, who I believe is the consultant on the project, has just finished putting together a conceptual plan, and he expects there to potentially be a virtual meeting at some point within the next week or two. So more information to follow on that, but they are at the stage where the first conceptual plan has, has just been completed. Rocky Harvest Settlement Compliance, I think we continue to follow that. Future exploration of shared services and opportunities. We're actually in the process of working out an arrangement with Carver for animal control. They're much better equipped than we are in the way of equipment and personnel. It seems like it might be a more cost-effective option for us to go that route and to have that coverage. So we continue to look at that. And then as far as grants go, Colleen Thompson is on board, and I have a feeling as things continue to move forward, more people will be calling upon her services. I have a couple things in mind as well for, for her to chat with her about, so.
Beautiful. So, big list, little bit tedious going through all that, but certainly keeps us on target and
I really value this because we don't get a chance to talk much.
Yep.
You know, so this has been great for me. Thank you.
Beautiful. Okay, I think probably we're up to a school committee update.
So, we're still in school. That's a plus. Just to remind folks, you know, we have a, we have a hybrid model, both at the Denit as well as at Silver Lake, whereby majority of the students are going either Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday into the building. We are, and then there's a small group of students that are remote only, and there's also a small group of students that are going Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Every Wednesday is a remote day for, for the, for all students, and they have a, there is a part of the morning is set aside, at least at Denit, for professional development, and then there's check-ins with the various classes for the last part of the, of the day. You know, there's a lot of work, particularly, and this is speaking at least from Denit perspective, I see what goes on at the high school because of my two boys that are there. But, you know, we, we have to understand the feat that has been accomplished to get this off the ground. I mean, basically, every teacher at the Denit is a first-year teacher. Everything that they had done to run a classroom and do their work has been upended. They, they, the students are, I mean, Peter gave an update at our school committee meeting two weeks ago, which is why I wasn't here, and he said, and this was right after, you know, things had opened up, and he said that, you know, the kids are doing everything they can to be compliant with the new, you know, guy, health guidelines with wearing masks, and they're just so happy to be able to be back in the building and to see some of their friends and be with the teachers. And, you know, while this is an enormous headache to try and do all of this, both with remote, and a mix of remote and in person, and with all sorts of new requirements and distancing and smaller class sizes, I think it's really worth it. And, you know, we've had so many good stories with that, and I think, you know, our teachers and our administrators have really gone above and beyond in trying to make sure that this works for, you know, as best as we can, given the circumstances. So, you know, I would just note that. You know, and as, as one of the things that came up, and, you know, I appreciate the chief and, fire chief and Liz working with us to try and get this done, is that, you know, there's, we have a lot of technology at the schools, but the teachers are working on Chromebooks, and if you're not familiar with the Chromebook, it's basically a not-great tablet with a bad screen. And it makes it, you know, but it's 250 bucks. So, you know, being able to, to give a bunch of students those to use is one thing, but if you're a teacher trying to conduct your classes, it's, it's quite difficult. And at the Denit, the other issue is, is that we have to try and limit the students moving around the building too much. Specialists come to the classrooms, right? So, you know, art or music, they come into the classroom and the teacher leaves, at which point they leave their desktop machine there and they can't, and that's the time they use to prepare for their other classes. And now they have just their Chromebook to try and compare on, or when they're going remote, they're trying to do it on a 10-inch screen. So we, we moved ahead with getting laptops for that, and we are waiting on the invoice to be able to submit for the county to be able to fund that. The other thing that we're doing is we've also ordered a small number of docking stations. And this gets to Liz's point, what you're doing for the townhouse, where you're starting to look at, how should we be doing technology in an age where we may need to be more flexible and be able to go, well, today we're in the building and tomorrow we're remote? And I think it's going to be something that's gonna be important, not just for when we get this sorted, to whatever that means, but I think down the road as well. So we've ordered four docking stations as part of this purchase in order to do a test of teachers using that instead of having a desktop machine and a laptop. And so they would just have the one machine which they can click in and utilize with the thinking that that's the way we may move to one, to, to save a little bit of money, even though our expenses are gonna be a little bit more. Because, you know, laptops cost a little bit more than a desktop, and of course, they have a greater chance of, of breaking and things like that. But overall, if we can get the teachers what they need to be able to, to, to do the work that they're doing, because they're recording all sorts of videos for the remote stuff and being able to upload those and do that, so that, that was a big thing. It took a lot of time to kind of sort through that with Steve Pello and, and make sure that he could support that, because it's added support. But I think it's the right thing to make sure they have the right technology to be able to get the job done. And we, we have had, not at the Denit, but there have been a couple of COVID cases. And I think one in, at the Kingston Elementary, one at the middle school and high school, and then we had another one at the high school. But those have been managed in accordance with the Kingston Board of Health in order to make sure that students were, were, were safe and that there weren't any, that the contact tracing was done for any close contacts. We have yet to have any issues at the Denit, which is great. But, you know, as we can see, the numbers are ticking up, not only in Massachusetts, but around the country, and the weather's getting colder and so on and so forth. So we'll see, you know, we're prepared to go remote when we need to. And we'll just continue to, to move along and, and try and make sure that these kids have the best school year that we can give them, given everything that's going on. Any questions?
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
I think we're up to town administrator updates.
So I touched on a few of the items during some of the other points. I just wanted to make everyone aware that for the lift project, or the ramp, or however that ends up shaping up, that it was news to me, but apparently you have to be aware of certain access requirements. And if you're doing renovations and you've already done renovations within the last three years, or also depending on the budget for your renovations, you could find yourself in a situation where you have to make all of the entrances to the building accessible. So that was something that our architect was kind of walking us through on that. I think we're gonna be fine, because we haven't done any sort of substantial renovations at all within recent memory. So I think we're, we're good on that. But it did get me thinking, I'm wondering if at some point it might be worth talking with Colleen Thompson and seeing about pursuing a grant, maybe, to help kind of move a step forward and at least establish a formal ADA plan for the town. Rob Furlough is our ADA coordinator. You know, we haven't, we haven't had to do a ton in, in that regard. You know, but I think it's something that moving forward, especially if we continue to see these projects coming down the pipeline and continue doing some of this stuff, I think that the accessibility requirements are something that we're really gonna have to be aware of. And if we could obtain grant funding and get a substantial plan in place, I think aside from moving us ahead, it would also go a long way in terms of showing our, that we're well-intentioned to any state agency that might be looking at work that we're doing in the future. I think a lot of it has to do with, with your intentions, and if you're trying to move things ahead in the, in the proper direction. So that might be something worth pursuing, or at least seeing if there are any grants out there to fund a study such as that.
Liz, does, does, I assume what that means is any public entrances?
Correct. Correct. Well, that's what I'm, that's what I was hoping. It was unclear, it just specified any entrance, and then, of course, I was thinking of some of the, the rear entrances to the building that no one utilizes anyway. But that could, those costs would really add up. I think we're in good shape because of that we haven't done any renovations, not even just within the last three years, but really any substantial renovations in recent memory. But beyond that, I just, I don't think we wanna find ourselves in a position, especially where we're talking about having the roof evaluated and everything else. I'm not all that familiar yet with what triggers that level of, of review from that state agency.
I mean, assuming, assuming it's public entrances, because I can't imagine it, it wouldn't be, because then that means every single door would need to, to come into compliance, which would be kind of crazy. But let's assume that, we will hit that, we will hit that trigger at some point in the next five years.
Right, and that, that's just my concern. It's not for this one project, I think we're out of the woods on this, but it's more, it's moving forward with all these projects coming down the pipeline and your committee working hard to kind of bring everybody ahead. I don't wanna find ourselves in a spot where we think we have funding in place and we're ready to put something out to bid, and then the designer looks at it and says, oh, no, wait, you trigger X, Y, and Z requirements, and we just simply don't have the money to do it. Because the only alternative, from my limited understanding of this process, would be to not do the project. Once you start to do it, if you trigger that, you have to either make everything in compliance or not do the work, and I don't wanna find us in that situation. So I think this might be something that we wanna get out ahead of.
And I think it will inform what we can and can't do in the building.
Right.
You know, I mean, because I, I think by the time you deal with the water issues and the roof, and you add this project onto it, you're gonna bump up against that with anything else that we do. But if, in other words, if we can't gain entrance to the lower level in some way that's accessible, then the lower level is not public space.
Correct.
So then that, then that informs what you wanna do with the old part of the townhouse in longer-range planning, you know, and renovation, because it just, because, and if you do that sort of renovation, that will definitely trigger this. Because that will be expensive. So I think it's a great idea, if we can either find any grant funding, or if we can't, then we probably still need, this is one of, one of those things that we have to get our hands around in order to be able to plan properly and not run into a, you know, major snag down the road when we forget about this and we go to do the water, you know, mediation project and, and have an extra bill because we have to put, you know, we have to put a different ramp on to the Board of Health Office, because that one's not compliant.
Right, right. That was exactly what concerned me. I was kind of taken aback when the architect first mentioned, oh, hey, what, you know, when have these renovations happened? Fortunately, they, they had a call with the state to make sure that, that we would be all set for this project, but I think long-term planning-wise, I think this is something that we need to put on our radar. Also too, so we have a few vacancies and positions being advertised right now. The first one is Council on Aging, Director of Elder Services. That's posted right now internally, it'll be posted externally shortly. Any positions under the Wage and Personnel Bylaw, we have to post internally first, as per one of the hiring policies within the bylaw. within the bylaw. The Planning Board has a clerical position right now, again, posted internally, but will be posted externally. And these external postings are assuming that no, that we don't receive any qualified applicants internally. Also, today it went out for library senior technician. That's due to a planned retirement coming up. Now, additionally, our zoning officer is going to be resigning, but fortunately, he is giving us a grace period in which to fill that position. My plan for it is to treat it like we have all the others, but I just was looking for a little guidance from the board. I was going to work with Tom Millius on making sure that the job description and the posting are up to date, which would be common practice. And then I had wondered if you wanted me to circulate it to, I don't know, say, the Chair of the Bylaw Review Committee, Chair of the Zoning Board, and just see if anybody has any comments. I'm happy to do that if you think that that makes sense. The job description was updated not all that long ago, and it is in line with the job description for most other towns that are hiring for a position such as that. I do think we need somebody local and that has the time available to have a presence in the building when we're open for at least a few hours a week. So, again, you know, assuming that you want me to proceed in the same way that we have for all other positions of this nature, I'm happy to circulate it to those two boards and, you know, give them a date in which I need comments back by, or the members could even email me direct.
I like that idea.
Yeah, I think that's essential, if only as a courtesy. And also, there may be some good ideas, but especially the zoning bylaw review committee, I think is energetically still in this game. And I think their input would be worthwhile.
Sure. So, I'll get that circulated within the next day or two. It'd be good to get that posting, at least get the clock started on that. So, I'll move forward then in that manner. And also too, we received further correspondence from the town clerk. She needs two appointments to be made to the Board of Registars. One has to be unenrolled and one should be in, as a Democrat, I believe. I think that you want equal representation. It cannot be an election worker. And it's also not supposed to be somebody who's on a board or committee. I believe that that's the case. She did suggest that maybe one of you would want to reach out to Susan Ossoff from the Democratic Town Committee. She said she would be a good resource as far as maybe suggesting some names. But I think it would be good to fill those seats, I would think, prior to the election. So, I just.
Why isn't she reaching out? Why are we being the ones, I mean, I don't mind, but...
I don't know. I think it's your appointment to make. I believe that the people are appointed by the selectmen, but I don't know.
I'm glad to reach out to Susan Ossoff.
She'd be good.
She may well have a full plate. She might know of others. So, Liz, we need one enrolled as a Democrat and one unenrolled?
Yeah, that's what I got from her email. I think I forwarded that to you back on Thursday, but I can send it. She was very specific in there and kind of outlined what it is that they need. But with the election right around the corner, just don't want her to be shorthanded.
I assume she's got a Republican then.
Yes.
Okay.
Liz, didn't you just say that they can't be on a board or committee?
So, that's what the email indicated. But I thought that one of the people that was listed is on the Wage and Personnel Board. It listed Elise Lyons in the email, and I believe she's actively serving on the Wage and Personnel Board. So, we can verify that.
That changes who you can ask.
It does. And where we have so many volunteers from town that wear a lot of different hats, that significantly limits our pool, if that's the case. That's what I gathered from the email. I'm happy to forward that email. John, I can even forward it to you if you'd like, just in case you happen to know of anybody. So, I think it'd be good to get this filled.
Liz, does she provide any information about what a registrar does?
No, there wasn't anything like that in the email. I can.
Could we get an idea? Yeah.
Yeah, let me, let me send her a follow-up and verify what she said about not serving on another board or committee. I'll inquire about that wage and personnel member and can also get a little synopsis of what it does.
Great. Anything else, Liz?
Nope, that's it.
That was a mouthful. Well done. Thank you. So, let's see. I think we're up to minutes. Just dates to remember. I think our next meeting is the 19th. We will want to invite a department chair, or committee, or board head, anyone in particular, anyone is interested in having in to spend a few minutes with us?
Do you think Rob will have any updates by then, or is that too soon?
I was thinking of Rob too, just in case he has that quote and everything. It might just be a good time to clarify some of that.
I'll invite Rob. He's been to a lot of our meetings. And it'd be good just to keep those projects moving, particularly with winter coming. So, we'll give a try at that. Great. So, minutes of September 21st. Any corrections, suggestions, amendments? I had just one. On the third page, our assistant assessor was named Wendy Hughes, unless she has another name, which she may, I know her as Wendy Jones.
Oh, that was her married name.
That was what?
Was Wendy Hughes, Jones Hughes, right? Yeah.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. Well, when she was married. I mean, I don't think she's married now, so.
I will change that.
Yeah, I think it.
Whatever she goes by.
All right. I will check tomorrow how she's signing her emails with that title and make sure.
It's Jones.
Okay. So, you have that, changing that to Jones? Otherwise, any other changes?
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion?
It looks good to me.
What's that?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes with the change on Wendy's name.
Very good. Roll call, Mr. Trainer.
Yes.
Ms. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Russo, yes. Beautiful. Any last words before raves or rants?
We still have, we still have executive session minutes, and there's about to be a third one now. So, we've got to get that done at some point.
I think, and ideally, we should get it done in executive session. Sorry, I should have remembered that tonight. Next executive session, we'll get on it. All right, rants or raves? Anyone?
I've got some. Go ahead, Christine.
Can I have a question?
Sure.
Can anyone hear me? Hello?
Yes.
I have a question. We used to always vote on executive session minutes in open session. Are you not doing that anymore?
I think maybe we're not. The problem is, to start talking about language in open session, I think invites potentially discussion that we shouldn't have in open session.
Okay, great. Just wanted to ask that, because they.
I mean, that's just my opinion. I suppose if there are no changes, we could do it in open session. But I think simply remember, I will keep that on the front of my mind. Next executive session, we'll catch up.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Rants or raves?
I got some raves. So, my first rave is for John Schustad. I think the pictures he gets out on Facebook has just made so much good press for the Fire Department, for the town. People are, like to see what's going on, and he does a really good job of getting those up and putting a little blurb with it. So, that's one. Second rave is, I had a person come forward, this more with genealogy. Her uncle had died, and it turned out he was a genealogist, and tons of information about Plimpton. He grew up in Plimpton. But he's got two pictures of horse and team moving the boulder that is up on the green that has the Deborah Sampson plaque on it. So, these are really something that we need to get. They need to be restored, but then I'd like to see a section up in the townhouse where we have old pictures. I'd like to see the historical society have the pictures, you know. So, that's maybe the library too, get them around town. But it's pretty neat seeing the old boulder on a wagon with horses, four horses, being pulled to it. And the last rave, Bree, is a great job on the minutes last time. You know, it's just really good to see that narrative where if somebody's dialing in, they're going to get a nice story that they can follow. So, thank you.
You're welcome, John.
So, my rave is for Chief Silva's mother. It was a bunch of years ago, I presented her with the Boston Post Kane Award for being the oldest citizen in town. The nature of my work in the world, I deal with a lot of really old, really beat-up four-legged creatures and really, and some really old two-legged creatures as well. So, Ms. Silva just was this exemplar of resiliency and strength and vibrancy. And even years later, she was still so sparkly and bubbly. So, she's very much an inspiration. And it's hard to lose her. But what she inspires is pretty ensconced in my mind, and I'm pretty thankful.
Yeah, here, here. Couldn't agree more. I've got a couple of raves. My first one is for Rob, our Highway Superintendent. Just, he's taken so much on his plate, and he's really doing a great job. And there's just so much teamwork and cooperation. It's really, he's doing a fantastic job. And then my second one would be the Emergency Management Team, who are continuing to be vigilant and keep us safe with upticks in COVID. It's just so important that we're all still working together and that, and being vigilant and not letting our guard down so that we have an issue that we have to deal with. It's just, I'm very thankful for their leadership and what they continue to do to keep us all safe.
Beautiful. All right. Last words, anyone?
Good night.
All right. Make a motion, adjourn.
A second.
Roll call, Mr. Trainer.
Yes.
Ms. Joy, Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Everyone, please have a safe couple of weeks, and we'll be back doing this in two weeks.
Good night.
Night.